Oh, oh yeah. My minute, it'll be six o'clock, and so we'll have a...
Got, gotta change it, yep.
It is now five o'clock, November 7th, 2017, and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the CDF Housing Assets Accessor. May we have real call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 54954.3. State law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone in the audience that would like to address the Council, therefore can we have declaration of closed session items by City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have several items this evening, however, several of them are related. Item A, on behalf of the City Council, is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2. Facts and circumstances related to that are set forth pursuant to Government Code 54956.9E3. Items B and C, on behalf of the City Council, are related to items H, I, J, and K, on behalf of the Airport Authority. That is pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, and the parties to the litigation, as well as the case names, are all set forth on the agenda. Item D, on behalf of the City Council, is related to Item L, on behalf of the Airport Authority, and that is also existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, and again, the parties to the litigation and the case number is set forth on the agenda. Items E, F, and G are, sorry, E and F are real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. These are City Council items. The properties and the negotiating parties are all set forth on the agenda. Item G is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth pursuant to Government Code 54956.9E3. And lastly, Item M, on behalf of the Successor Agency, is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8, and again, the parties to the negotiation and the parcel information is set forth on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. We will not recess to closed session, and regular session can be set at 6:00 p.m.
Hey, good, oh, you voted.
How did you win?
I saw you. Yeah!
And the marauders.
Sorry, it's, it's six o'clock, we gotta call this meeting.
He's supposed to be here, it's about 7:30. Jim's supposed to get here about 7:30.
Anytime. Last year, they were orange, they looked a little better.
It is now seven o'clock. I'm sorry, six o'clock. I knew I would do that. I'll start all over again. It is now 6:01, November 7th, 2017, and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the CDF Housing Assets Accessor. May we have real call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy will be arriving late to tonight's meeting. Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. May we have closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had several items this evening, however, several of them are related. Item A was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2. The facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C, on behalf of the City Council, are related to items H, I, J, and K, on the Airport Authority. That's existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The parties and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item D and Item L are related. Item D, on behalf of the City Council, Item L, on behalf of the Airport Authority, also existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The parties and the case number are set forth on the agenda. Item E and F are real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8, and with respect to both items, the negotiating parties and the parcels are described on the agenda. Item G was also anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9, and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, on behalf of the Successor Agency, Item M, real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The parties and the properties described on the agenda. There is no reportable action with respect to any of those items at this time.
Thank you. We will not move on to invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Reverend Patrick Travers from Holy Innocents Catholic Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief John Schuler. Please stand.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, remind us to be thankful this coming Advent season for the abundance of America. Help our board members not forget the reason that they are embark, the reason they embarked on this journey, and remember the feeling of pride and joy of their civic duties they have been entrusted with. Keep their hearts filled with the pride of accomplishment and joy as our City Council members. Guide Mayor Garcia with discernment and strength as she leads the City of Victorville through, leads the City of Victorville as our mayor. Feller and our council members with excitement as they take advantage of fresh opportunities and ideas. Keep them humbled by constantly reminding them that it is only through the glory of this nation that they are able to sit as elected officials. Guide them with your Holy Spirit as they pledge their allegiance to God and country, and give them the courage to stay true to you and themselves, and realize the profound responsibility they have undertaken in the decision-making policies they will be confronted with, and in so doing, realize their goals and dreams as mayor and Victorville City Council members. Amen.
I can pledge my hand over your heart, pray to be...
For the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do not have any proclamations or special presentations. So I will have our City Clerk present the agenda to Council, and any revisions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the Council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the Council Chamber's lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comments sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the Council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the Council, and there is one revision to tonight's agenda that has been made available to the City Council and members of the public. It is pertaining to Item Number C4. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2376. This is a corrected version to show on Page 6, Number 11, the delivery times to be between 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. rather than 6:00 p.m. That's the only correction, and those are the only revisions I have.
Thank you. This evening, we also do not have any appeal hearings or public hearings. Therefore, we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar items C1 through C14 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Madam Mayor, if there's no items to be pulled, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Yeah, I have items to pull. I have comments on C6 and C10. The only one I want to pull for a vote is C4.
I'm sorry, you're pulling C4?
Yeah, that's the one I want to pull, and I want to make comments on C6 and C10.
Six, and what other?
C6 and C10.
Okay, time starts now. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so for C6, on 10/11/17, under Brom Blazing Smith Wine, there's legal fees in Vemis attached to those. Could you tell me if those fees are some potential litigation, or that's just a process that we have to pay for legal fees? I'm not understanding what's going on with legal fees in Vemis.
There are a number of legal issues involving Vemis and its abilities to operate as an electric and gas utility, so these are just standard course of doing business costs.
And then for C10, there are track maps, 153-10-5 and 153-10-6. Are these vacant, vacant properties, or there's infrastructure in these lots?
Bear with me, let me catch up. These look like very traditional, oh, these are swapping of liens, so these are likely undeveloped properties that have track maps attached to them. Track maps require some form of security to allow for or cause the installation of public improvements. In this particular case, they're swapping securities, basically changing out. Could be due to a ownership change, or could be due to previous surety not providing the same insurance.
Thank you, no further questions. So the only one I really wanted to pull was C4 for a vote, but the other ones were fine if we did one vote motion.
I would request to modify my motion approving the consent calendar with the exception of C4.
Second.
Voted on separately by the Council.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
So now for C4, I move for that item to also come to a vote. My vote for that one is no.
So we should have a motion to approve, and hopefully a second, and then take a vote?
I didn't follow that.
I believe Councilmember Gomez wants to have it reflected that her vote would be no on Item C4, so I think we still need a motion and a second and a vote on it.
With the one change?
Correct.
I would move approval. Item four?
And waving further reading?
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
So for clarification, I'm voting no on C4.
Correct.
Okay, that's, I didn't understand the motion, so, thank you.
So the motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no, and Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, award of contract to DDH Apple Valley Construction. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council award a contract to DDH Apple Valley Construction in the amount of $237,822 for the Oro Grand Wash drainage improvements.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So what were the guidelines that the city staff relied on to determine that Oro Grand Wash at Seneca Road needed attention, and where did the, where were the funds withdrawn from?
The latter part of that question involving where the funds are drawn from, that's Fund 202, that's signifying a storm drain fund, so I believe this item particularly is budgeted out of that. In fact, yeah, that's what I'm seeing in the fiscal impact side of the staff report. Certain, we can call up Mr. Gangler for a much more technical answer to the first part of it. I think a large part of it starts with just the fundamental basic erosion that you've seen over the years visually that traverses under Seneca Road. There's been extensive amount of maintenance efforts to try to slow down erosion so as to not potentially impact the structural element that is under Seneca Road. If you'd like something more technical beyond that, Brian, I'm sure can come up and answer.
I think that's, I was looking to see what the reason was, but you clarified that there was a steady and there's erosion, erosion, so that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
The staff report indicates that this is a request for the, to award a contract for $237,822, but the project cost is $287,170. What's the additional $30,000 for?
Looking at Page 2 of the staff report, it looks like there's a contingency and a construction management fee built in to get you to the aggregate total of $287,000.
So since it's a contingency, it may or may not be expended, but it's authorized by the Council with this action for $35,673. The construction management, we don't manage our own construction projects?
This one particularly, I'm not sure exactly how they're relying, what they're relying on for the construction management. I actually would have to ask Brian Gangler to come up and speak to that, to answer the first part. Yeah, the contingency works exactly that way that you described. That is there for unexpected conditions, conditions that were not known, that require change order out in the field, so we do very standardly approve those contingency types for construction contracts so that we don't have to keep coming back to Council.
Construction management includes inspection and materials testing. We, we're gonna inspect this in-house with our own inspectors, but we hire a materials testing company to test the compaction for the grading and the other materials that we use in the project.
Any other questions? I need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D2, additional appropriation to complete the La Mesa, LMAD, Number 2 access ramp. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council authorize an additional appropriation in the amount of $14,100 from LMAD Number 2 fund balance to complete the La Mesa, LMAD Number 2 access ramp portion of the La Mesa Road and Amethyst Road rehabilitation project.
Yeah, I have a question for C, D2. So didn't Council have discussion on LMADs and CDF districts? If so, why didn't we budget the $14,100 for this item already? Is that something new?
This is probably a casualty to our budgeting process where we just didn't properly estimate the progress to be spent in the last fiscal year and the exact amount to be carried over in this fiscal year, and because actual activity out in the field occurred slower, I believe, and being incurred more, so in this current fiscal year is really the fundamental reason why this item is, is on the agenda.
Yeah, the total amount hasn't changed, it's just a question of whether it occurred last fiscal year or this fiscal year, and we missed the mark on how much would be done as of June 30.
No further questions, thank you.
One else?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D3, award of construction contract for removal and installation of new carpet at the City Library. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve the award of a construction contract to Moore Flooring Inc. in the amount of $31,318 for removal and installation of carpeting in support of the City of Victorville Library.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. How many square feet is a library, and when was the last time we re-carpeted that library?
Library, if I recall off the top of my head, is 7,500 square feet. That may have increased with the enclosure of the atrium up to 9,000, 10,000, 9,000, okay. I did remember some of that. I believe it's been over 10 years since we re-carpeted the library. It's desperately needed. This is being paid out of CDBG grant fund, and while we are pulling out the carpet, we will have to move all the shelves, all of the books, and while we're doing that, we'll also take the opportunity using city staff to go in and paint as well, to try to get it looking as, as good as we can. I, since I'm already answering that question, I'll mention one thing to the Council, that we will do a tremendous amount of public education about this issue, but because we do have to move all of the books and move all of the shelving out, the library will likely be closed for about two weeks. In the first couple of weeks of December, we will put that on the calendar, we will publicize it in the newspaper, on the website, on Facebook, on Twitter, wherever possible, so, but this will not be as big a problem in the future, I'll say, because it's actually being replaced, rather than a roll of carpet, by carpet squares that, so that if there's a stain or a problem, they can be replaced individually without having to pull up and move absolutely everything in the building.
No further questions, thank you.
One else?
Move approval.
On Item 3 of staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D4, Southern California Edison rate increase. This is the item that was put on our agenda by Councilmember Eric Negretti. The recommendation is, any action is at the discretion of the City Council?
Yeah, I asked staff to pull together just the public information that Edison had sent out. I think Mr. Negretti's request was, offered up for discussion, and staff's available for any direction at the conclusion of the discussion, let you so choose.
Thank you very much. I wasn't aware, I wasn't sure if other folks were aware that Edison had planned a 12% rate increase over the next three years, and from time to time, the city will send out a, a letter, in this case, to the California Public Utilities Commission, maybe, I would hope, against this kind of increase. The number of increases for power, you know, are silently going through the process, and in the past, I, I was hoping that the city staff would be able to speak to recent increases over the last 10, 15 years, plus the reason for the 12% increase for the next three years, and whether, as a city, we believe that would have a negative impact on our residents and businesses.
I know Edison recently... I know Edison recently, this summer, implemented a rate change. I don't know that they would call it a rate increase or not, that actually took residential customers from paying the same rate regardless to a rate that impacts residents if they use more than somebody at Edison, I suppose, has decided you should be using. So, you know, my house tends to have family in it all hours of the day, so I use more energy than I'm supposed to according to Southern California Edison. Other than that, in prior years, they've been relatively stable, I'll say. I don't have the data off the top of my head. They were relatively stable for a number of years. This is the first significant rate increase that I'm aware of. I don't know, Keith, if you know from just the VMOO side, if you have any more detail on that than I have already provided. Certainly, we can do some research along those lines and come back. That's the desire of the council. The desire of the council is to direct staff to draft a letter in opposition to these rates. We can do some of that research to, to add some meat to the letter and prepare that for the mayor's signature is typically how that would happen.
That would be my request, yes.
Yeah, I would like to add, if it's okay, if we are going, I'd like to see some more information in regard to what has been the rates the last three or four years and the rates, but if we are to take an action, it's good that the City Council taken action, but it's also important that we join or ask the mountain desert vision of the League of California City and the league and our Assemblyman and Senator, that we also ask them to represent us on this. Like the rates have gone out of sight and they continually, are continuing to raise and part of my bias is I keep reading in the news media and hearing on television this cozy relationship between the utility companies, Southern California Edison, and the actual agency and the state that grants the raises. And I know that the state legislature has weighed in on this and they are conducting a study of their own. So it would be appropriate time for this council. The information in whatever position we decide to take to get as many other agencies involved as we possibly can.
So the recommendation is then to have an additional study of this?
Is there, is there also a recommendation to actually have the staff write a letter based on the additional information or do you want to wait till you get additional information? Maybe after we get the initial.
We can bring it back fairly quickly. I would just provide comment that Southern California Edison is a, or at least in the past, I don't know if you know better than I do at this point, George, Southern California Edison was a fairly major sponsor of the League of Cities activities. So sending it too far along may not have the desired effect that you're looking for, but we certainly can do it. George, are you aware if they are still one of the major sponsors of League of Cities? I believe they still are.
My biggest concern in bringing this up and which I look forward to some more discussion later is what I believe is when you have conflicting policies that just don't line up with reality. So if we have mandates in this state to use renewable energy, which is more expensive than regular energy, the next thing you're going to have is rate increases in perpetuity because it's unlikely we'll ever achieve that actual goal of, and it just keeps changing. I, I don't even recall now if it was by 2020, we were supposed to have X amount of renewable energy in the state. And I'm sure the nonsense goes on and on, but then what's going to happen is, is Edison starts to do these programs, our energy's going to continue to go up and up. So I believe the position to keep raising increases in perpetuity is untenable and I'd just like to see a little bit more information about the why. And I believe I've, I've looked into it enough, I know, but I would like to have it for discussion and certainly this is the process to do that.
Thank you. So that is the recommendation then?
Thank you.
Now we move on to item D6. 2016 Homeland Security Grant Pro, no, I'm skipping over number five. Item D5, adoption of a unified city logo. Sorry about that. You've been patiently waiting and I'm skipping over.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't want to say too much. We've had two of our excellent staff members working on this for quite some time, had a lot of input from a variety of staff members, so I will turn it over to Sue Jones and Sophie Smith to, to talk about this process.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor Garcia, members of the council. Sophie and I are very pleased to have this opportunity to speak with you this evening. Thank you. We stand before you to request your approval to adopt a unified city logo and to elevate the current city seal and tagline to a place of importance where it'll be used for official documents such as clerk's documents, resolutions and proclamations. Just to kind of give you a little bit of history as to why we're here this evening. Back in May, you'll recall that council approved a service agreement with Vision Technologies to redesign the city website. And that gave us an opportunity not only to improve the technology of the website, but also to look at the visual appeal of the website and look at our branding. Quickly, when we got into the design, we realized that we do have a problem, a, a, quite a challenge as a city. You'll see the, the display that you have in front of you shows that we do not have a unified city logo. Right now, we have multiple logos that are being used by the city, which really does dilute the city identity and our branding, and it does give a confusing message about the city. So we wanted to use this as a catalyst to go ahead and look at reclaiming our identity, looking at ways to communicate a unified branding image for the city. You'll recall several years ago, council approved the use of a marketing logo for economic development under the World of Opportunity tagline. So we have that going on, but we also by default use the city seal as a logo for my purposes for public information and marketing the city. Now it's our opportunity to take those two ideas and to try to unify something that we can use to brand the city as a unified logo. We conducted lots of research. We went out and did a community perception study. We also did an employee perception study. We also did a logo stakeholder survey where we reached out to members of the business community, various groups, council members, and tried to get some ideas. We did develop a list of common attributes and strengths that we have as a city. And basically, that list came up as growth and opportunity. We wanted to convey energy, growth and progress. Our location is a strength, we're at the heart of it all. We are the retail center in the high desert. We also, interestingly enough, think of ourselves as bold and visionary, and I agree with that. So in coming up with a design, we tried to communicate all of these things. And also, I just wanted to mention to you, to try to ensure that we had broad-based support for these ideas, we did put together a committee within the city of employees that have marketing within their responsibility, and they were the ones that helped put together these surveys and also analyze the results. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that a lot of our employees did have some say in this. And I guess it's time. We'll go ahead and unveil the logo to you. So I'll go ahead. Excellent. So there it is. One of the things that we wanted to consider when we put together this design, we wanted the V to stand alone as a graphic element. We wanted whenever you saw the V by itself, you would know that that was Victorville. You didn't have to have the word Victorville with the V. So it could stand alone as a graphic element and would be instantly recognizable as the City of Victorville. Also, you can see that it definitely conveys those thoughts of progress, innovation and growth. You can specifically see the building blocks that are in the V. They're there to convey growth. And if you look at the center of the V, it looks like the corner of a building. So it looks like something's being built. But also, we wanted to make sure that our people were represented in this. And a lot of what came through in the surveys is that people believe that Victorville is a good place to put down roots and raise your family. So when you think about growth, you also think about building your family here, not just a business, not just a building. Also, you could see that the graphic elements are very structured, so we wanted to make sure that the word Victorville had personality. So we chose a script that is stylized and shows the spirit and vibrancy of our community. And also, there's a wonderful nod in there to the airport. If you think about us in Southern California, Victorville is extremely unique to have the airport that we have. And little known by many members of our community is that we have the second largest runway in all of North America. So, good, excellent. But I don't think our community understands what goes on at SCLA, and it's something that we probably could do a better job of communicating. So we wanted to make sure that the airport was also represented, and so you can kind of see that it looks like wings in, in the V. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to add, one of the goals that we had in both teams working on the project was to try to develop and find a logo that would speak to all of the different audiences. Sue, as the PIO primarily communicates to our local residents, and for economic development, I'm typically in my group is trying to communicate to businesses that are looking to locate here. So currently, we have two different logos. So we use the World of Opportunity that Sue mentioned earlier for marketing purposes into the city, and yet when they do become interested and come and sit down in a room with, like myself and Doug, for example, we may have something as simple as different business cards with different, different branding, but we are representing the same company, the same vision, the same goals, and so it becomes a little confusing. So we really tried to get a logo that would actually talk to all audiences. And I think that this particular logo does that in that it captures the growth, like through the buildings and the pro-growth attitude, pro-business attitude of the city, but also captures, especially through the tagline mentioning the history and the innovation of the city and its residents. So I think it actually meets that goal, accomplishes the ability to be used in multiple venues and really have a unified brand and marketing unlike what you saw on the screen where there's dozens.
What's the wording underneath the Victorville?
So basically, we gave you two choices this evening. We, we are proposing two different taglines. So on this one here, the white background, it's history, innovation, progress. The blue one here is the second tagline, it's where the world does business. And so those are before you, we wanted to give you a choice on the tagline and get your feedback.
Looking at the various city logos, when did the City Council approve using all of those?
I know that the council approved the use of the World of Opportunity for Economic Development. I believe it was probably about 17, 15 years ago.
It was the early 2000s.
Well, I don't recall ever seeing a lot of these. And that tells me that somebody had to approve it, and therefore it wasn't the council. Not since I, when I was the manager or when I was the council. But, so if we adopt a new logo, are those people who change this going to be free to do it all over again because they don't like the logo and start using their own?
No, part of the plan, if, if council approves the logo, is to adopt a style guide, and that style guide will dictate everything about the logo. One of the things I think that, I'm, I'm speaking for other people now, but I thi, I think it's difficult to brand and communicate about your program without a logo. And I think in absence of a logo that they felt worked for their, their project, a lot of logos were created. But our goal with this logo, should you approve it, is to have it tailored, where we would work with the designer to go to each program, and we would sit down with them and we would tailor the logo to their specific needs. So an example might be recreation uses a little bear in their, a lot of their communication. So you might put the little bear in the V or have the little bear hanging off the V or something like that to tailor it to their purposes for recreation so that they could still brand their activities through their department. But they would always be very, very clearly part of the city logo. It would be undeniably that V, and you would not have any difficulty recognizing that it was part of the City of Victorville.
I don't want to take up too much time, but we have a logo. We have a city seal, adopted and used. Why did people start changing it? They don't like it or they didn't like the fact that the council had approved it and they wanted to do their own thing? I mean, I'm kind of offended by this, that City Council has a logo, is recognized, it's on our letterheads, it's on everything we do, and someone decides they want to use their own. Doesn't make any sense.
I think what we're proposing is not replacing the seal. The seal will stay. The seal will be used for official documents. It will continue to be used by City Council for city purposes. But when it comes to marketing, what we're trying to do is look at the logo that council already approved for use for economic development and try to rebrand that as the new logo, and that will also be used by my department in, in communicating about the city as well.
And going further with that.
What's economic development? I'm sorry.
It's the World of Opportunity.
Can you put this slide back on, Brandon?
Part of what this would do is it would set in motion a plan that would eliminate all of those logos that were not approved by the City Council. This would replace all of them. It would have, they, they would have the opportunity to, to add something to it that would help identify whatever it was they were trying to, to do. But that authority would lie largely with the Public Information Officer and myself to make sure that it meets the guidelines that would be required. So I don't disagree with your comments, Mr. Cox. In fact, the adoption of a new logo would cause all these other ones to go away in large part.
When did we remove the key city of the high desert?
That, that's not removed either, and we would propose that it would remain with use of the city seal. So whenever the city seal's used, then the key city of the high desert would also be used.
That's the official city motto or slogan. It's in the municipal code that way. We're not proposing to change that.
Yeah, so that cannot change.
No. This would just be for marketing purposes, like when Sophie goes to a trade show and she's trying to attract new businesses.
Yeah, many times you see the, the world logo that you see there with Victorville, California right below it. Many times it had a tagline along with it which was.
A World of Opportunity.
Opportunity. That would go away, and what we would ask the council to do is choose between history, innovation, progress, and, I can't see that one. Can you read that for me?
Where the world does business?
Where the world does business, so.
You can't see that? I thought I was the only one. Actually, I like both, and I think that the actual logo itself, I like both a lot, and I could see how they could be used in different instances. So I think it's been a great job. I really, I like it. It looks contemporary or forward-thinking anyway. A lot of cities have had their logos for some time, but I really appreciate the work and I really like both of them.
Thank you. Yeah, I think what we found in our research is a lot of cities started with their official seal and then just simultaneously use that for a logo. But as they got further along and the key aspects of their city changed, they actually kept their seal and elevated it to City Council use, official documents use, and adopted something like we did as economic development with the World of Opportunity that really allowed us to, to let others see us as a new and modern community in the, in the efforts to attract. And so we still have the seal for those other purposes, but when it comes to speaking to a more national or even global market, really. But when it comes to speaking to a more national or even global market, really, a really modern look and feel and something like the one we are proposing that really focuses on building blocks in a progressive and business-friendly community and city conveys a different message because a logo gives you an immediate impression of an entity or corporation. And the seal, it's very governmental, and it should be, and that's exactly why it should be used for official documents. But when it comes to marketing, a lot of our attributes and what we do, we're a very, very pro-business community, and we like to display that.
Has city staff discussed the approximate cost that it would take to replace the old logo on street signs or anything outside? I know there was a very brief discussion in the agenda about that.
So we have researched what other cities have done, and most cities, because many in California have actually moved from a seal to a more modern logo, have done a phased-in approach where they first used up consumables, like business cards, stationery, those kinds of things, replaced out the new logo on those items as they ran out. And then on items like street signs, decals for vehicles, et cetera, they did a phased-in approach. And over a number of years, actually put sections in for replacement in their budgets. In our case, I've actually talked with our manager that handles traffic and signs and talked about inexpensive ways that the, a new logo, if adopted, could be implemented over a period of time and through our budgeting purpose, but with cost consciousness in mind.
I don't know where I can put my hands on the document. Maybe the attorney knows. But I have seen the phrase that "the city clerk shall affix the city's seal." This is a logo, it's not a seal, and yet you say this new seal would be used for, well, you said you weren't going to change the city's seal, but you could change the logo. But in the discussion, "the city's seal would be elevated to a place of importance and used for official purposes such as the city clerk." I think we need some study on this because I'm not sure that works. You have to use the city's seal? Saying you're not going to change the city's seal. Yet you're saying you're changing the city's seal.
It was that the seal would be used for official documents and for council communications and all official council members, the existing city's seal.
Which seal? The proposed one?
No, the existing.
It's not a seal. The proposed one is an actual logo. So the existing city's seal would remain for official purposes, council communications, official proclamations, city clerk documents.
It currently says the city's seal would be elevated to a place of importance, which apparently the city's seal is not now elevated, and it's not going to change. So how do you take a seal that's not going to change and elevate it and use for official purposes when you have to use the seal for official purposes? And we're not changing the seal. Don't answer that. These are questions that the attorney has to look into. But I know there's a requirement that we have to use the city's seal on official documents.
It's currently in code, I believe, isn't it? That says that the city's seal will be used for such purposes. So we were just basically reiterating that.
There's no proposed change to that.
No.
So the city's seal would remain?
Yes.
Yes.
And continues to be used on all official business and carefully continues to use it. This is just purely more a marketing issue.
This would be put on business cards, on, you know, if we order shirts for a trade show or something, rather, it would have this rather than our city's seal.
It'll definitely be on the website.
And that's where, I think, thinking about elevating the city's seal, rather than having the city's seal on absolutely everything, every piece of paper, every business card, every shirt, every side of a door. It elevates it in that it's no longer used for more menial, everyday uses.
I have another question. What inspired the phrases and why these two only?
Well, the surveys that I mentioned, where we did a public perception study, we also did employee survey, and then we did a stakeholder survey. We got many themes that were common that came out of those. And we used those themes to do some brainstorming, to try to capture the common themes that came out of those. Basically, we were trying to get at the key attributes and strengths of Victorville that set us apart. And really, that was just a creative brainstorming. The "history, innovation, progress," I believe the word "history" was there purposefully to try to make a nod to our rich heritage and our history as a city, but also to look forward to the innovative nature and progressive nature.
And actually, we're not looking, although we can, if that's the council's direction we can use to. We were hoping to narrow that down to only one tonight, if we could.
Yeah.
That's the request of staff. Certainly, if the answer back is no, let's use both of these because we like them both, we can work that out, but.
I make a motion that we make a decision today as to which one we'd like.
Would you like us to bring him closer for you? We kind of kept him out here so that people could see him in the audience as well.
Sure. Blue background and white background. Not all backgrounds are going to have a color, so if not one of these, what actually shows?
Actually, what you're seeing is the logo in two different applications. So this is what it would look like on a white background in full color. And then what you have here is more of like a gray tone. That will always be in that box. Yeah, so Sophie's going to show you a business card that we had mocked up so that you could see what it would look like in an actual application.
It's not between the two different logos. That logo over on the right could be used in different colored situations. You would essentially, part of the design requirements would be using this exact blue, that exact gray, and white. And it could be interchangeable depending on whether it's on a blue background or a white background.
Right. And if the concept is approved, then we will work with a design firm who's very experienced with this to put together a very specific style guide. The style guide will give all the specifics as to that actual blue, the Pantone color, so that that blue is always the Victorville blue. It will become the signature blue. And we tried very, very carefully to try to make it very close to the blue we already use. You probably can see that. But it will always have specifications as to how the logo will look, how much space will be around the V, that specific Victorville script, the colors that can be used, et cetera.
And it would prevent what you see on your screen, which is all these variety of logos popping up, because they would be required, staff would be required, to follow that guideline.
Now, council members, business cards, would they have the seal, the original seal, or would it be the new one?
You know, I think that that could be up to you.
I think that's up to us.
Yeah. I think it could be up to you because...
I want to keep the one that we have now.
That you have.
Yeah. I'm old school. I want to keep what I have already.
I understand that.
I don't change anything.
And we've seen in other style guides where specifically anything to do with council members is, the seal is used, not a logo.
You also, if you look at our current business card, you'll notice that there's a watermark in the back, so that you can see the city's seal used twice. It's kind of interesting. It's like a watermark. We've seen that certain websites have done that. So the seal is in a watermark behind, and then the new logo is there as well. So it kind of gives a nod to the past as well, which is another option for us as well with designs going forward.
Yep. The Southern California Logistics Airport was changed for very, very good reason. It stands out. It's used in marketing. It's used with all the business conducted at SCLA. So that would be replaced?
Yes, that would be replaced. Part of the strategy here is to unify the city with SCLA and make it clear that SCLA is in Victorville and part of Victorville.
I like the one we have now.
You know what, just to hopefully move this along, if, for action, maybe at the next council meeting, we can have sort of a little bit more detail about how these would be used, who would use them, and a little bit more about what we're going to keep the same. But I could easily see, you know, you're talking about dealing with international companies out there at SCLA, having a tagline like that, "where the world does business." And then, on the other hand, I can see that tagline being used locally in a lot of the other stuff that we do. So not to say that I'm concerned about which department has what, I'm sure we can flesh that out. But as opposed to asking for a decision today on, especially, taglines, but like I said, I think it's a lot of great work if we could just get a little bit more information again about how we could possibly use just one or both, and then what we retain, and then come back next time, and hopefully, we can have an action item. That's what I'd recommend to the council.
Recommendation is continued to the next meeting?
Yes.
Could that be on the condition that all five council members are here?
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
Very good.
So that would be my motion, continuing and make sure that all five council members are here for action and get a little bit more information about how this would be executed with one or both logos, and then again, how we're going to retain the seal.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no, and Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great work.
Thank you so much. Beautiful work. Now we move on to item D6, 2016 Homeland Security Grant Program Allocation. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council ratify the expenditure plan for the HSGP allocation for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and authorize the city manager or his designate to process all documents required for the program administration. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have questions. So for this one, are these state funds, state grant? I'm assuming Homeland Security Grant maybe is a state grant. The other question is, if not, where are these funds coming? Because I do see a budget account number. And third, is this an annual maintenance that the city of Victorville does every year?
So, they are state grants, but their likely source was the federal government because it's Homeland Security. A lot of times, the state administers monies for the federal government, so. Many years, I don't know how many years in a row, John probably doesn't know either since he hasn't been captain for all that long, we receive notification that we are going to receive grant funds for something like this. And a lot of times, they come with some flexibility as to how they'll be used. In this case, it would be adding memory and storage to our video security system for both police department and city hall. So it's not something that is always the same. There's another grant that, I actually thought this was in our staff meeting that I mentioned to John, that they typically use for overtime for DUI enforcement. That's not the same grant. That one, by contrast, is essentially for that purpose, and that's what those funds are almost always spent on. So this has got a little bit of flexibility.
And then the amount, $32,000, I thought we would have had to have budgeted, but if it's a grant, why do we have to budget for that amount? Is it because it goes first to the general fund or whatever fund, and then it gets distributed or re-appropriated from there?
So any time we receive funds, even if it's a grant, it still has to be appropriated. It's part of the legal accounting process. Otherwise, even though we had received the funds, we would be prohibited from actually expending them without it in our allocation plan for the year, so.
Thank you. No further questions.
No further questions. Madam Chair, move approval. As recommended by staff.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Non-opposed motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D7, Airport Joint Use Agreement between United States Air Force and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
Recommendation is that the Board of Directors approve retroactively entering into the airport joint use agreement between the United States Air Force and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority for airfield use at the Southern California Logistics Airport. Approve $342,246 in proposed retroactive revenue and approve $114,082 in proposed annual revenue for a total of $456,328 in additional revenue for fiscal year 2017, 2018. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. Right here, it says to approve retroactively. Why are we saying that? We also have funds that we didn't pre-allocate or have in the budget. And another thing is, I really didn't understand this agenda item. It was very few pages, three, four pages in a booklet. But, I mean, can you give me something more substantial so I can understand what's happening in this item, besides it being an agreement of sorts?
I can. Madam Mayor and members of the council, this item is brought to you in your capacity as the Airport Authority Board of Directors and is involving a document called an Airport Joint Use Agreement. That's the phraseology that the Air Force uses, but effectively, it's an agreement that allows the Air Force to reimburse for costs associated with the operations and maintenance of the airfield. And this agreement is an agreement that had previously been in place. I believe the prior version of it dates back to 2009 and was a five-year agreement that expired in 2014. And that document was much more involved because it actually provided for reimbursement of costs associated with two military flight operations. One was a C-17 flight training mission predominantly out of March where they would conduct nighttime touch-and-go operations using lights-out situations, night vision goggles. Then, in addition to that flight mission, there was also pilot training for the unmanned aerial vehicles or the drone aircraft. Started out as the MQ-1 Predators, and then eventually, and I believe what's out there currently is the MQ-9 Reaper. This item asked for retroactive entering into, because the prior agreement termed in 2014, we had been in disagreement for quite a few years as to the appropriate costs that the Air Force should reimburse. And making the science a little bit complicated in calculating the formula had a lot to do with the calculation and projection associated with flight operations. Under the prior contract with the two missions, the flight operations were much greater than certainly what they are planned for in the current operation, which is just dealing with the drone aircraft. So it's taken quite some time to resolve the contractual side of the relationship. However, during that same period of time, the Air Force has still been occupying the ground space that their hangar effectively sits upon. So they've enjoyed the benefit of the real estate. The retroactive provisions of this agreement is to allow us to get paid for their use over that period of time where we didn't have a contract. And this contract does have a five-year term, so it would run through 2019, making us current and requiring us to likely enter into another agreement, presuming, of course, the Air Force wants to continue to operate beyond 2019.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Just one question. This is an agreement with Southern Just one question, this is an agreement with Southern California Logistics Airport, its income, revenue $456,000 plus. Can that money be used by the city for any other purpose, or is this restricted to be used at the airport?
That is lease revenue that is restricted to be used at the airport.
Thank you, that was just for the record.
I'd like to make a quick comment on that, and just let the staff know, and Keith and Eric and everybody involved with this, and give a big thanks to Congressman Cook's office. In dealing with the airport and the Department of Defense, that's many different layers, there's many different people involved, when you even say the Air Force or Department of Defense, then you talk about Congressman Cook's office, and the City of Victorville. And, you know, we're, I'm just really happy that this was resolved, because typically we'd like to get these things taken care of, but sometimes the timeline slips, I'm on vacation, you're on vacation, people change, generals change, and it's a very difficult thing to do, it's very complex, actually. But we have a great relationship, I hope, I hope nothing adversarial ever came out of this, it's just taking care of the details, and this is a big day, actually, with this particular issue, because we have many issues that we'd like to take care of in a timely manner, it doesn't always happen, so for this one, I can actually sleep good tonight and say this was resolved, and I think the way the staff went about it was fantastic, and again, thanks to Congressman Cook and all involved to resolve this issue.
Yeah, anyone else?
Oh, I very much agree with the comments.
I move the item.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, second by Mr. Cox, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D8, Award of Contract for Pilot Testing, New Media for Arsenic Removal at the La Mesa Water Treatment Plan. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the award of a contract for arsenic removal consulting services to Water Quality and Treatment Solutions, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Any questions? Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to public comments, and I do have I do have two cards. Robert Harriman, and after Robert will be Blanca Lopez.
Evening, Council. Well, today was a real important day in Victorville, at least in my mind, with Measure K was voted on, and I'm hoping, well, I voted three times, as you can see, I'm hoping that everything, you know, goes the way we want it, it's gonna be a difficult task with two-thirds of the vote, but my gut is usually pretty good, and for some darn reason, my gut is telling me we got it. I went to my polls today, the polling place, and I didn't get there till 6:00 PM, and there were only 154 people that had voted in that polling place, and I believe that polling place, there has to be at least 30,000 people that would go to that one, because it's over there on the southwest side of Victorville. So, not a big turnout, I think that's in our favor, because the people who are the most responsible vote, and people who are the most responsible will agree with Measure K. And I have a little statement. Mrs. Gomez, I guess.
Are those bandages on your forehead?
I voted, I voted.
I'm sorry.
Anyways, Mrs. Gomez, I read in the paper, was against this measure, so I challenged Mrs. Gomez after, when everybody can make their remarks, to tell us why in detail, okay? She says she's a voice for the community, the underprivileged, the impoverished, and what have you, but she's unwilling to invest a half a penny per dollar into our community. Hmm, anybody who thinks that this measure isn't needed is off their rocker, okay? Our population has boomed, if not doubled, in the last 10 years, but our revenue has not. So we need more police enforcement, we need more firemen, we need a fire station open that's only partially staffed. So, I challenge you, Mrs. Gomez, when you do your remarks today after the meeting, would you please tell us why, as the paper, as the Daily Press stated, that you're against Measure K? And if not, then I would just, I guess I could just say, you must be bought by the unions and be siding with them. So, you might want to clarify yourself, thank you, Council.
Thank you so much, Robert. Blanca Lopez?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Blanca Lopez, I'm the inland region campaign director for CalEITC for me, that's the California Earned Income Tax Credit. I do want to give you, because my time is limited, the gist of what the California Earned Income Tax Credit is, but our larger goal is to create a partnership with the City of Victorville, some type of initiative or proclamation where we can get the information out to the residents of Victorville. So the California Earned Income Tax Credit is a brand-new credit that Governor, the Governor instituted about three years ago. Many people don't know about it, and most people are more aware of the Federal Earned Income Tax Credit, that's the EITC, it's been around for about 35 years, but the California, the state-level Earned Income Tax Credit is only three years old, much of the population doesn't know about it, and the biggest thing is that if they aren't aware, they can't claim the credit, and the state won't actually give taxpayers the credit unless they claim it when they do their income taxes. This is for working families who are making under $22,300 a year, and would be eligible for up to a $6,000 return when they submit their taxes and get their reimbursements, as long as they claim the credit. Some of the other eligibility requirements are you have to be between the ages of 25 to 65, have worked for at least three months out of the year, have lived in California for at least six months, and again, claim the credit when you file your taxes. We urge the community to go ahead and claim this credit, because again, it could be up to $6,000, which has a really high impact on someone, a family who's making under $22,000 a year. The research that shows that this money comes and stays in the community, people use it on car repairs, paying utility bills, rent, buying items for their children, clothes, shoes, things of that nature. So it's tax dollars that come into the city and stimulate the local economy, because it is spent here locally. Furthermore, we do encourage the community to use VITA services, that's the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, it's free tax preparation through the IRS-certified program, every year, thousands of volunteers get certified through the IRS, and they do free tax preparation for anybody making under $55,000 a year. And so we encourage the public to use the VITA service and actually claim the credit, it goes hand-in-hand with the CalEITC, so that they can get the maximum return with nothing out of pocket. And so I hope that with the proposal that's in front of you, you know, that would lead to an invitation during a regular council meeting for a proper presentation to the public, because there is more details I would like to share, but the time is limited. I'd be happy to take some questions, if anybody has any as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those were the only cards that I had. Is there anyone else that would like to come down and speak? No, I don't see anyone. So we move on to our city manager's report.
Yeah, just to clarify for the last speaker, under public comment, we're really not allowed to engage in questions and answers, because it wasn't agendized, but appreciate you understanding that if it is agendized, then you can get into that sort of thing, so. So, past events, on Saturday, October 21st, we had over 1,100 volunteers from 45 different organizations for a community cleanup, it was our largest ever, we collected just shy of 20 tons of trash in a community cleanup, it was amazing. Coming up this Saturday is our Veterans Day celebration, which includes a Freedom Mile Run, a parade, ceremony, this is our 21st year, the Freedom Mile Run registration opens at 8:15 at the corner of 7th and Forest, and then the run begins at 8:45. Parade begins at about 9:00 AM, and will go until about 11:00 AM, and then we have a ceremony, salute to veterans immediately following the parade, to be held at 7th and Forest, where we will, this year, we will be recognizing 99 Victorville veterans during our celebration, those are the ones that either they or their family signed up for. On Saturday, November 18th, we have a Neighborhood Cleanup/Free Dump Day, this would be open for City of Victorville residents from 8 until 1 at the Murph, and more information will be put out about that, of course. And then, coming up, a little bit longer-range planning, our tree lighting ceremony, Saturday, December 4th, the event runs from 4 until 7:00 PM at the south end of City Hall, the mayor will light the tree at dusk at that, so we have lots of free entertainment, including interactive musical light show, carriage rides, hot chocolate and cookies while they last, Christmas carolers, various food and gift vendors, games, and of course, Santa and Mrs. Claus, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Gomez, do you have anything? Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, I'm getting ahead of myself. We're moving on to discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming City Council agenda. Anyone have anything?
I'll start with you.
Yes, I'd like to add to the agenda, a discussion and a possible action for the California EITC for future presentation, since Blanca Lopez is already here, she would be able to capture if she's gonna be coming back or not, so I would like to add that to a future agenda, and if we can set up a date, that would work.
I'm gonna comment on that. Forty-five years of working in the public accounting business and working with income tax returns, what I know is that the Earned Income Tax Credit is the most widely abused feature of our tax code, probably ever. I don't want to be involved, and I don't think the city ought to be involved in, with any organization, they may be doing it exactly right, I don't know, but I see no reason for the City of Victorville to be involved in an entity whose only role in life is to help people get the Earned Income Tax Credit. Absolutely opposed to that.
Yes, go ahead.
The first, I'm not familiar with the program, this is the first I've seen it, but I would like to have, and I'm not opposed to putting it on the agenda, but what I would like to see from the staff is exactly, what does it do, and why would the City of Victorville be involved? We have dozens of nonprofit corporations, we have a lot of great organizations, but we don't get involved in them, and I was looking at this to see why, I don't want to answer it now, but city manager, I'd really like to find out, is there a role for the city? If it's a part of representing our citizens, we ought to look at it, if it's not, we need to know, so I would request that we not take a firm position to be involved or not be involved, until we have a report from staff.
That would be my recommendation, get a report from staff first.
That's up to the rest of the council, just.
I think what I'm hearing is, three of you at least are interested in having a presentation on this, so give us some time, I don't know anything about it, so give us some time, I can't put a date to it, but certainly we've got Ms. Lopez's contact information, and we can let her know once we get that, in fact, we may even reach out to get some information from her, because I'm not aware of anybody on staff that has any expertise in this area. Certainly, of course, our go-to is to check with other cities, see who is doing this and how they're utilizing it, what their experience has been, that sort of thing, so. And certainly, put that together, I don't have a timeframe for you yet, though, but certainly, we can communicate that when we have it.
Well, since I am an income tax preparer myself, I believe that something of this nature should be handled through a nonprofit organization, possibly a church or something of that nature, but truthfully, the city should not get involved with it. We need to have staff give us more information on it, I'm in agreement to that.
Right now, I think you had a request or a motion from Councilmember Gomez to add it to the agenda, so I think what I heard was Mr. Cox supportive of that, put it on the agenda, so perhaps it'd be appropriate to have a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just to add it to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
The motion fails, because we don't have a majority vote.
Anyone else have anything for the agenda?
Yes, I have something else. To agendize an item perpetually where the City of Victorville recognizes veterans that have passed away who resided at some point in the City of Victorville, this is currently done by San Bernardino County, and so I thought that idea was nothing new, and probably we can start adopting something like that, so it's not just this year, it's perpetual. So that's my motion.
Sorry, I did not understand what the motion was.
Would you repeat it? No, they didn't hear you.
To agendize an item perpetually where the City of Victorville recognizes veterans that have passed away who resided at some point in the City of Victorville.
Just for clarity's sake, are you meaning at the Veterans Day event each year, or at different times? I'm not sure.
So what the supervisors do is, they have a list, an item list, where if someone has passed away and it's a veteran, it shows up on our agenda, so we're consistently recognizing veterans in our city that have passed away, but it's something that we have on our documents.
Certainly, we could, if the council wants to do this, we can reach out to the county and find out where they get the information, I'm not sure where we would get that from, but.
I'd like to see that information, it's a nice gesture.
If the county's already doing it, I have no opinion either way. So is there a desire to put it on a future agenda, or?
I don't care. Problem is, how far back? Which veterans? The ones that have died in the last 10 years, 20, 30, 50, 100? For every one we get, how many do you think we'll miss? I mean, I don't care, put it on the agenda, we can talk about it, but.
I think I see a consensus of three people to put it on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, I think so. I don't know, I'm not speaking. No harm in agendizing, I suppose.
We're not agreeing to do it, all we're doing is, what?
Well, the way the policy reads now, these items don't carry any kind of an approval or non-approval, it's simply to put it on the agenda, at which point, you may give further direction, you may, in theory, approve an item, it just depends on how much information is available to be placed on the agenda at the time. time.
Hold on.
Is there a motion and a second?
Yeah, I had, I made the motion.
A second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Gomez, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Abstaining.
Motion carries with Mayor Garcia opposed and Councilmember Negrete abstaining.
Anyone else have anything for the agenda?
Yes, discussion and possible action regarding civic engagement and safer communities that encourage the general public to take more responsibility for their personal safety and security.
Try again.
This, discussion and possible action regarding civic engagement and safer communities that encourage the general public to take more responsibility for their personal safety and security. That's what I would like to motion.
There is no second, and the motion fails. Motion dies. Excuse me.
Next person?
No.
No, Madam Mayor.
No.
Okay, we move on to reports from Councilmembers, and this is the one that has the five-minute limit also. Ms. Gomez?
So, background on the California EIT and California EIT for me. This is one of the best tools that we have at helping lift people out of poverty. The CAL EITC for me is a statewide program run by, run by the Golden State Opportunity to create economic security for California's working families by connecting them with the Earned Income Tax Credit on the state and the federal levels. Since 2016, the CAL EITC for me has helped over eight-hundred thousand, eight-hundred thousand families and has claimed over two billion in the state and federal EITCs. Over ninety percent of the fillers have children. EITC for me successfully led a statewide coalition to expand the CAL EIT in the following ways. It increased eligibility limit to twenty-two thousand, three hundred a year, equal to a full-time minimum wage. All self-employed, ten ninety-nine, income is now eligible for the California EITC. And with the California EITC expansion, there are now more than one billion families that will be eligible for the California EITC for the first time and will need education and outreach to claim their credits. The partnership is occurring in the inland region, and due to the California EITC for me's multi-layered campaign in the inland empire last year, Riverside and San Bernardino County were the only counties in the state to see an increase in both number of claims and amount of money dispersed through the California EITC. The California EITC for me has now begun the outreach for over a thousand school districts in the inland region. We began to engage parent groups and liaisons across the border from Colachella Valley USC in the low desert of Riverside County to Hisparia USC in the high desert of San Bernardino and every district in between. One of the strongest educational partnerships in the inland region is Fontana USD, which has forty-five schools and over thirty-eight thousand students. Research has shown that children are the main beneficiaries of the California EITC. Our goal is to get the California EITC into the hands of every family. EITC outreach in 2018, the historic opportunity to bring economic relief to a million or more families. We're working with school districts across the states to ensure parents have what they need to fill, to file. We have partnered with the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tom, and send notices to parents in every public school in the state. The CAL, California EITC has also utilized statewide digital and texting campaigns, texting hundreds of thousands of people across the street, across the state, communicating with over a million people across California about how to claim newly expanded California EITC. Why EITC outreach and education matters? California has the highest rate of unclaimed EITC nationally. Every year, California leaves two billion of unclaimed EITC money on the table. Research suggests that outreach around state-levels EITC increase uptake of federal, of the federal EITC. Seventy-five percent of the people who filed for it in 2017 were new filers. Workers moved in and out of eligibility based on changes of their own marital, parental, and financial status. Three of five who received the credit used it temporarily for one or two years, claiming the credit was needed to be received. Many people worked, many people filed California taxes last year and had failed to claim it. Many people who qualified for the credit are eligible for up to six thousand dollars and failed to simply file taxes because they made low, below the regular income household. The survey conducted by the California Budget and the Policy Center found that fewer than one in five people who were likely eligible for the CAL EITC hadn't even heard of the credit. Characteristics of those that failed to claim are the areas with the highest concentrations of Hispanics, individuals with low incomes that require to file a tax return, parents, particularly moms of children of color, individuals participating in CalFresh and SNAP, individuals without qualifying children, populations with limited English proficiency, culturally diverse communities. And the poverty stats in Victorville is, well, we know we have a hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars based on the high desert opportunity. The total population below poverty is twenty-two point nine percent. There's income levels of less than a ten thousand dollars that would cover a very few...
You have thirty seconds.
And percentages of households with less than nine, twenty thousand dollars in annual income, that's seventeen percent of the working poverty. Percent below poverty level who work full-time is eight percent. Percentage below poverty who work part-time is fifty-nine point six percent, and you can find this in the American Community Survey, 2016, one-year estimates of the U.S. Census Bureau. Thank you.
Just one comment I want to make. For those of you who read the article last weekend about the, or my little disagreement with Russ Blewett about BVWRA, one of the things that the BVWRA Board did at the last meeting was filed a claim with the City of Hisparia asking them to pay their sewer bill. They haven't paid it all year. It's now over two million dollars, and it's creating some fairly severe financial pressures on BVWRA. That claim is going to the Hisparia City Council tonight. I probably expect them to reject it, but I'm very curious about whether all five of those Councilmembers are willing to say publicly that they refuse to pay their sewer bill after they've collected the fees from all their citizens and all their customers, and they haven't paid BVWRA for sewage delivered. It's an interesting problem, but I'll be interested to see how that gets handled with the, by their City Council tonight.
Councilmember Kennedy, they do have up to forty-five days to respond.
Oh, they may not deal with it tonight.
I looked at their agenda earlier today and did not see it. I checked twice. I may have missed it, but I don't think, I don't think they're considering it tonight. Prob, most likely...
It'll be sometime in the future.
Yeah, sometime within the next, I would say, thirty days or so, they would need to consider it for rejection is most likely.
I expect they will, but... Move adjournment.